Good evening. I didn't even do the, I didn't bring up the right window to do the old intro music and graphics because I'm off my game tonight. Horrible, horrible host and I am coming through a little hot too. All right, folks. Before we go any further, let me start the recording. This is going to be a very interesting subject that we're going to be talking about tonight and this gentleman Vincent Cooper. And just wait till you hear everything he has to say. If you haven't heard, or if you haven't read Christian Hicks, Substack post on this topic, then you will definitely be blown away by what you hear. But let me start the recording. And then we shall proceed with the Liberty Talk.
The Constitution isn't just a document. It's a blueprint for freedom. We're breaking down politics at every level, exposing government overreach and going where the mainstream media surely won't. Join us in defending individual rights against the bureaucratic tide. You're listening to the Missouri Liberty Report.
All right, somehow I am having geriatric moments all night. I barely touched the pad on the soundboard. And it immediately tried to restart the intro. I apologize for that. But again, welcome back to another rip roaring edition of the Missouri Liberty Report. To those of you who watch on YouTube or rumble or Facebook or listen via podcasting app or at mo-liberty radio.us. We greatly appreciate your continued support, viewership and listenership. And we've got, so this week we've got a really great show. Next week, we're going to have another good show. Now next week's guest. I don't know. I don't know how long this gentleman is going to be on with us. And then Tom's saying no stream. So let me make sure I'm streaming. This thing better not be all jacked up. But anyway. Next week, I'm going to have a gentleman by the name of Chris Bank on. He's the gentleman out of St. Peters who is having to fight over having too many sunflowers in his yard. And he's, I guess he's transgressed against the the flowers to grass ratio. So make that make sense. But he will be joining us next week to discuss that. He just, just to kind of let you know. Roundabouts, he did recently go to court. He, and of course they found him guilty of of, you know, again, transgressing against their ruling or their ordinance or whatever you want to call it. And let me check. Okay. Shut up. There we go. Okay. I am live. I don't know what's going on. Anywho, so he will be joining us for a little bit next week. And you'll get to hear about that stupidity. He is however appealing to the St. Charles County Courts to see if they will intervene on the stupidity. And when he lays it all out for you, you will want to face palm many times, just like you're going to face palm a whole lot of times tonight, guarantee you, if you don't end up slamming your head off a desk or a wall or a door or whatever is handy. Wooden, preferably to metal. Then I, you must have no pulse. Our guest this week is Vincent Cooper. I'm going to let him lay out the story. Let's, this is how I'm going to start it off. This man is in a tussle, not physical. A verbal tussle. Let's say fighting with mental midgets over inappropriate library books in the school library. And him having the gall to bring this to attention and fight back. And now they're pulling out all the dirty tricks, just like government agencies tend to do when you cross the line in their book. So first of all, Vincent, good evening to you. Welcome to the show. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, John. I greatly appreciate it. You see the little title underneath there? It says epicenter, podie, that would be purveyor of truthful information. And I started a couple of years ago, I had a podcast, Common Denominator Network on Facebook. It's still, the site is still up on Facebook. I shut it down a little over a year ago because I just had way too many other irons in the fire. Back in October of 22, a friend of mine who had purchased a, a person who had purchased my Volvo convertible a year before calls me up and says, Vincent, would you join me at a school board meeting? And so I said, sure, Suwana Freeman, I will be more than glad to join you there. And she was speaking about at that time, the students had elected a female Natalie, who was going by the name of Arthur to be king of the homecoming. And so we were like, whoa. And, and she was saying, listen, these boys for 12 years have had to toe the line, a rite of passage with good grades and extracurricular activities. And there, you're allowing a girl to be king of homecoming? So it basically said, who's running the show here in the educational system? Now, the next gentleman, and I'll speak frequently of him on here. His name is Heath Gilbert. He's with the Cameron School District exposed.com. And on YouTube, show me transparency. Heath Gilbert gets up to address the school board. And he's talking about grade point averages. He is speaking in terms of percentages, statistics and ratios. He's spot on his information and on his delivery. While the school board sat on the stage of the auditorium, looking down upon us, disgruntled with disdain on their face. They're looking at, they're not even listening to them. They're twiddling their thumbs, playing with their cell phones, doing paperwork, counting ceiling tiles. President Kersher, Dan Kersher, a retired minister. And still does ministry work for a volunteer fire department and the police department as a chaplain. He's sitting there like this with this big, you know, bulging belly and not paying attention to this man. I was so angry that night. I wanted to just jump up on there and throw the men off the stage and say, let's dance. I really did. But I walked up to Heath and I said, sir, here's my number. I want to become your next best friend. The disrespect was too much for me to handle. I'm angry. If you start a fight or you get involved in a fight, I'm behind you. A couple of days later, I received a restraining order from the president of the, of the school board. Which went nowhere. He had a hearing for me to go to. Apparently he felt threatened yet he had four pages that were written at the equal level of, believe it or not, a 12 year old in school. He had misspellings, paragraph, it was a disaster to read. It was like, Dr. Zeus, can you make something of this? Without no history of quote, an assault, what have you, threatening manners, anything, not a record of anything. And he got that signed by the, the judge, Teresa Christian Bingham. And it's like, lady, are you kidding me? The first, it's four pages, by the way, of child printing. And I'm like, lady, the first line says, I've only met the respondent one time. And the last line said, I am in fear of him coming to school board meetings. And yet there's nothing on the other pages that have any history that he would require law enforcement to protect him, taking resources off of and away from people who really justifiably needed. So that was dismissed. And it's like, this is just crazy. Well, Heath got a ban for going onto the second floor to read the agenda. He went into a public building and decided to walk, and it's an office building. It's not classrooms at all. To look at a ban, look at a, an agenda. And they're like, well, we, we could bring it down to you. No, I want to see it for myself. Well, they banned him. So in January, he had about a 39, a 60, 90 day ban. In January, I contacted Dave Rollins of the American Centers, Missouri Centers of Freedom Centers of America, of Missouri, Dave Rollins. And I think I've got that right this time, Freedom Centers of Missouri. And he put together a law firm. It took about a year, but the settlement came through, a settlement, not, not one side won or the other side won, but technically Heath did win. The school had one of two choices to make, folks. I can't make this up. They could either apologize to Mr. Heath Gilbert for their quote, wrongdoings to him in banning him unjustly, or they could turn around and pay $17,500 of the lawyer's fees. Cause a First Amendment violation or trial case, there's nothing that's given to the person that actually gets violated. It's absolutely insane. So they decided to pay $17,500 of the taxpayers' dollars for his attorneys. Yet they, again, they didn't want to apologize and admit that they made a wrongdoing. So they also had to spend about 60 to 80,000 through Ed Council, which is a law firm, one of two in the state of Missouri that cover all kinds of legal problems in schools, I guess is the best way to put it. They don't have constitutional attorneys. They didn't stand a chance. And that's what we've been dealing with here in Cameron, Missouri. We've been dealing with a tyrannical authoritarian government, foreign government. You want me to continue? I can.
Well,
Any questions?
Well, there, there's just one comment that I have so far. And it is, they had to pay his attorney fees of 17,500. And they forked out another 80,000 to another law firm. And it's so easy for them to do this because it's not their money. It didn't come out of anybody on the school board's pockets. It just funneled right out from school, either an insurance policy that the school has, which is paid for by the taxpayers. Somehow or another, these people, yes, violated the natural right of free expression. They forked out 87,000, no, 97,500, like it's no big deal and won't admit to wrongdoing. And this is where I, I, it's just like if you see, like, if a police officer or multiple police officers clearly violate someone's rights, or they've been, you know, they, they lied to get someone put in prison who was actually innocent the whole time. And these people get out and they sue the city. The taxpayers end up paying for the police officers mistakes. And I just wish it was more common that you're like, you know what? I'm going to sue the actual people who offended me or caused me, you know, again, violated some natural right of mine. I'd rather personally affect their pocketbook because then maybe next time they won't do it. But if they just get to use taxpayer money, like they think that it's just a never ending land, you know, just a big waterfall of money dumping now all the time. Yeah. Why would they apologize? Oh, we can just drop $98,000 and pretend like this never happened because it didn't cost any of us personally one red cent. And that's one of the more, one of the most irritating things about any case like this. That the taxpayers are on the hook when these people clearly A, shouldn't have the type of, shouldn't have been elected to that board in the first place. B, couldn't find their butt with both hands a flashlight and a map. And C, don't care anything about that little seat of power that they have on the school board. They should be, people I think have to get it through their heads that like, yeah, but let's, I'm just going to sue these individuals personally. And let's see if that changes the behavior when it starts hitting them in their own pocketbook and they can't hide behind this shield of taxpayer dollars. Brandon, anything you add?
No, you pretty much nailed it right there. Yeah.
If you want to continue on Vincent, feel free, man.
Well, I'll tell you what, I can't, yeah. But the thing is the taxpayers and they don't realize that their property taxes go up and the sales taxes and the, see, they manage to say, oh, you're not, we're not going to increase any taxes on the sales of businesses, for instance. And, but they hit you on the, on the property taxes. And since Cameron doesn't have, quote, a large population of ownership of people, other words, it's a lot of landlords. You're looking at big businesses that have maybe 10 or 20 rental properties. The renters don't realize it, but they're paying because their, their rent goes up. And the property owners are the ones that are paying higher as well. But, but they're the ones that are really directly affected because they can see it and they, and they could feel it in their pockets. But going back to January, having had done a little PR for Heath and him being able to acquire a, a good, well, a good group of students in a, in Washington University to help represent him, students, by the way, meeting seasoned attorneys. In January, I brought, I asked Dan Landy to listen to Heath. Cause Heath had some viable concerns about policy violations, obviously. And it was very discerning to me. We needed to, I wanted to see a group of people get together for around Heath. So I got Dan Landy, who's a retired state trooper, retired air force. This man is highly decorated, wonderful young, young man. He's a couple of years younger than me, so I could say that. But no, he's, he's, he's a highly decorated state trooper, 23 years on the force. So he came into play. The following week, I asked Travis Eldridge, who at that time was the administrator on the Cameron Community Forum, a big social media account here in Cameron, which censors. Keyword, censors free speech. He turned around and came to the table to help Heath and Dan. And then finally it was Joyce Tigler. And Joyce Tigler was a person I had met. She was a manager director down at the Republican Party platform type thing that they've got in Plattsburgh and a wonderful lady. And so we got together and in February, I decided to do four interviews with Heath Gilbert. The first two went great. The third one, he ended up on Richie King's, what, what's called W O Entertainment Podcast. He spoke with him on fourth, on the 14th of February. Don't ask me how I can remember these things. Actually, I could tell you, it's the truth. You gotta remember the truth. And he gave, he sacrificed his Valentine's Day, basically. And so the third show we had, he and I were just about ready to open up the biggest can of worms. But the day before I had been vetted for almost two weeks by Dr. Rick Scarborough's staff. Dr. Rick Scarborough is out of Houston. He's like Billy Graham. Another Billy Graham. He's a, and I love Rick Scarborough, Dr. Rick. He's a good man. And his, they, they could only give me an hour. And at the end of that hour, he's like, gosh, I wish I could have had another hour with you, you know? He goes, I just didn't know who you were. But that's okay. But halfway in it, this is where it gets crucial. We started finding pornography. And I said to him, is there anywhere we can go to look at the pornographic books that are being distributed at the public library, high school library? And he said, yes, gofolet.com, booklooks.org. It may be reversed. It's a possibility. Anyway, the dot com and a dot org, but it's book looks, go follet. So the following day, having that information, Dan Landy found 26 pornographic books that had actually pictures in them. Some of them. And that's against the Missouri statute. That's against the law. I'll get to Missouri statute in a moment. So Heath and I decided to do a podcast, a third one. And we exposed the librarian, Tanya O'Boyle and her Rainbow Library on her Instagram account, followed by three school board elected officials as she is brand, she is bribing children with candy to read dirty books before they get banned, distributed at the public high school library, paid for by the taxpaying citizen. And she had to write a $300, 300 word essay to Hope in the Box. So Hope in a Box could give some freebies. This material, gentlemen, is so vulgar and vile. We are adults. I know we've been in pool halls. We've heard everything under the sun. Is this educational material? No. So Heath Gilbert and I had exposed her video. We found 26 books at that, the next day, with Dr. Rick Scarborough's interview. Found 26 books and we marched right into them on the March 22nd of 23, school board meeting. Seven of us addressed the school board. And we all had different concerns coming from different angles. Paula Allen had come on with us for, and she's still supportive of Heath and Dan. And I will tell you, I'm a little brash and I can understand. I'm not everyone's cup of tea, Brandon. You still like me?
Yeah, yeah. No, no. Can you hear me now?
But yeah, but seriously, you know, we, we addressed the school board and we had a, we had a pastor's wife read from the book Lucky, some of the most vile, disgusting, vulgar pornographic words that you could ever imagine. And these books are being given out to 18 year olds and under. Joyce Tigler had a friend that came to the table and said, guess what? I found a Missouri statute. 573.440, 573.050. One says you cannot have pornographic books in the library with pictures in particular. And the other one says you cannot distribute. John, you and I cannot walk down the road. And Brandon being the tender age of 13 right now, hand him a Playboy book. It's against the law. We would go to jail. That's a one year prison and sentence, $2,000 fine. And personally, I felt that Tanya O'Boyle's should have had the participation award of signing up as a quote, sexual registered offender. It didn't happen. Her husband's on the Cameron PD. They protect one another. And we've got a lot of law enforcement married to the quote, teachers in this school district. Cameron R1 School District, to be exact. So we made our addresses and I had personally said to Robinson, you need to step down. That's the superintendent. You're the CEO. Get off that stage. Never come back. You've been signing checks for pornography. That's enough for me to say you are violating the law. You are a criminal and you're not good for the kids. The second person was a president, Dan Kersher, again, retired minister. And I told him, I said, you need to step down. This is not what a minister supports for an educational tools of curriculum, books, pornography in nature. Well, the next month, Dan Kersher stepped down and gave up his presidency. Superintendent stayed there. And that was one little win, if you want to call it that. But the residents were the only ones that were now allowed to quote, address the school board of Clinton County, Cameron R1 School District. Only residents. I pay taxes, you guys pay taxes. Your tax dollars goes to that school, a portion. It doesn't matter. If you have a concern and you want to address the educational system, you should be able to do that. And that is called taxation without representation. And I've got the superintendent actually admitting me, that's exactly what he could do. Why? Because Mo Desi, that would be the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, gives these school districts the power to literally run their own agenda. In this case, I may go to Cameron, spend money and pay taxes, but I'm again, not allowed to quote, voice my, my, my concerns. Not even as an uncle or a grandparent of a child, or find out why the kid is not at a certain level. They won't do it. They, they, they literally suppress freedom of speech. Anything guys? Feel like I'm dominating. I don't want to.
Oh, no, we were just trying to get the full story here because there's a lot. I mean, when I read the, the first Substack about it, there's just so much detail that I think the audience needs to hear about. The, I guess I'll just jump ahead a little bit then. The part that really caught me off guard there that I found shocking was that the superintendent knew that there were pornographic books in the library ahead of time and didn't feel the need to address it until the parents tried to address it. That was the part that I was like, wait a minute, he knew and even got caught in a text or emails saying that this is going to be a problem for us later. And it was like the smoking gun of sorts. So if you want to talk more about that, I'd be loved to hear, you know, about, just, and then also like the, it was the M C E C. And like the, just the different outside entities that were pushing for this and like how that was part of the, the big part of the story that I was like, that's, you know, I don't, not the crux of it, but I just the, the outside forces being able to manipulate these small towns. Like you were saying, they're, they're rural, they're conservative areas. But the, these agendas are getting pushed on these kids at these schools and radicalizing them. And so just, just all the different administrators and all the different pieces that were involved is, I think, important to hear, just how, all the different players.
Well, it gets better, gentlemen. It does get better. So now I can't speak and I haven't been able to speak for, up until tonight, I was finally banned. We'll get to tonight. Cause you guys are reporting what's going on right now. This is cool. So that happened in, in, in March. Now we had a couple of ideas. We are problem solvers. At least our group is. We wanted to see a book review committee get together, review the books. How we still are working on that three years later, how to rate these books. Now there are many different ways we could go about doing that, but they won't even sit at the table and try to, try to figure it out. So what they ultimately did was they said, superintendent Robinson said, well, we'll put together a book review committee. That lasted about like that. And so instead they started pulling books off the shelves and they started making it where the parents had to sign waivers of these books that were restricted so their children could learn about how they can learn how to get gang banged, raped, homosexual experiences, enjoying these things. Incest and molestation as well. I can't make this stuff up. So those books are currently still, some of them are in the school right now as we speak. But they've been pulling some books, but now we're finding, and we never wanted to ban the books, by the way. Everyone in camera was saying, oh, you guys are nutcase radicals. You want to ban books? We're like, no. My answer, my personal answer, and I'm speaking for me. Take those books, put them in a public library and if the freaks want their children to go on a family field trip on a Saturday, go have had it. Have fun. That's my answer. But it's not banning them. It's just replacing them elsewhere.
If I could really quick, I just want to, just really quick, I, I totally agree. And just want to like, the way that the people are trying to frame the book banning, it's not, it's against the spirit of like the original purpose, like book banning used to be about canceling ideas. It used to be about censoring and silencing people with ideas. And there's nothing about wanting pornography out of libraries that is against, like trying to like stop a student from thinking or acting for themselves. Like that's the nature of what book banning used to be about. Or like when they would talk about burning books, it was to censor ideology, not try to protect kids from pornography. And so I, I just wanted to say that along with your point of that you're not trying to stop access to these books for the parents who want to give them. You just don't want access for the kids, for the parents who don't want them. Cause they're going to be at the public library and parents can't be at the school 24/7 patrolling that. And so
Correct.
Yeah, I, it's kind of like too faceted there. And the people who come at you and try to call you like, oh, you're just trying to ban books. It's like, that's a total straw man argument because no one's trying to say that. And also no one's trying to censor certain ideas. It's just that we don't want kids having porn. So anyway, go on.
Well, I was just, let me add to that. This, this, yeah, this is the typical response now. It's up, they, they're, you know, anytime you get involved in your schools or whatever, where you're trying to pull material out that is not essential to a that is not essential to a good education, teaching them life skills. Well, then you're just automatically a fascist, right? You're Hitler. You're the next incarnation of Hitler. And the next thing you know, we're going to take a bunch of people out. We're going to segregate them and do all kinds of other stuff. Anything they can possibly say and pull out the showstopper words, that's some friends of mine call it showstopper. If you call someone a fascist, a racist, transphobic, homophobic, whatever, it's supposed to make the people with small brains stop listening to what you have to say. It's automatically, I can't listen to this guy anymore because he's a racist. And you're like, no. Okay, prove that, that this person is a racist. And then if you don't want to listen to them, fine, but you're, you won't even go through the, the trouble of trying to prove like what you just said. Prove that he's actually trying to ban the books. They won't. They just throw the word ban out. It gets their little crowded people all hyped up and their little pants catch on fire and they run around like flaming retards. And then you have, we have to be, sit here and go, no, 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 no. Now put your hearing aids back in and listen. But, and, and that's, that's the most frustrating part. Whether it's this topic or, or trying to get rid of personal property taxes. So you don't get taxed out of your own home. You're automatically, you're just, you hate the kids or you hate this or you're that. And thi- this is the most, this is one of the more irritating parts, right? So now Vincent has to go around, he almost has to play this game of going, what are you talking about? What do you mean I'm trying to ban books? Now he has to spend his time trying to prove that he's not doing these things just because some schmucks say that he's doing it. And instead of being able to do good works, now he's on two fronts. He has to beat the people back that are talking BS. And then he also has to work on the school board and trying to get them to do the right thing. So now he's on a, he's on a two-front war, three, if you get other groups involved. And it's like, pe- people are just trying to do the right thing. You have to fight on so many more fronts than the idiot brigade that out there that just gets behind their megaphone and holds up their signs that are, are written in crayon with the R backwards. And you're like, like, excuse me? Why do I have to defend myself?
And not to mention, like, it's that kind of thinking that empowers the librarian to have an Instagram page where she's handing out candy to promote kids to read these books that they're getting ready to, like it's, she's, she's going as like, look, I'm so progressive that I'm stopping, that I, I'm getting all these kids to read these books before they ban them. And like, I'm so empowering and I'm so progressive. Look at me, look at me. And, and like you said, it's, it's, it's that, it's that, it's that, um, the tribalism, group think that's like us versus them. They're banning the books, so we need to support her in her fight. And it's, again, it's just, there's no nuance to it and they're totally missing the point.
Go ahead, Vincent.
Well, you, you know, I, I, you've been breaking up a lot, Brandon, and John, you were for a moment. Um, I, I can only say that I do believe in a freedom of speech. I may not like what someone says. Now, don't get me wrong. If you're going to say, I want to kill you and I'm listening to you say that to me, that's a threat. There are laws against that. Or I want to burn down a house. That's, there's a law against arson. Banning books is never, has never been the agenda. It was basically restricting them. But the superintendent right now has left the school district wide open because he's been removing books off the shelf. And the ACLU would love to jump on that bandwagon when they find out that he has been taking books out of the school completely. Because he can do whatever he wants, basically.
Or so he thinks.
Or see, thank you. So he thinks. So, um, yeah, I, I guess, you know, without beating the band, but you are right. I was, I was battling a couple of fronts there. Um, you know, March, April rolled around and things were pretty good. I found my son, my 33-year-old son. I had been father, basically, um, I thought I was so immature, self-centered, career-oriented, non-committal. I never thought that I'd have a kid. Um, the situation basically came out that I have a son, 33 years old. Wonderful son. I was blessed and I mean that, gentlemen. Um, about a month later, I got slammed with a sexual harassment charge, which is a felony in the state of Missouri. Also with that charge by legislation, these idiots in their infinite amount of wisdom said, you have to turn in your DNA when you're arrested or if you're convicted. Let that marinate. The legislation, there's 14 states that have done this. If you're arrested or convicted of sexual harassment, you have to turn your DNA over to the state. But get this one. Sexual harassment is a crime that's like, they tack that on to people that have just raped someone, beat someone, assaulted someone, stole from them and they threat, in other words, they just throw, they gang pile the charges. Since there was no, and you have to prove sexual harassment, you have to prove that you had the intent to do mental harm to another individual. So stalking would come into that play, so on and so forth. So I get this, 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 this phone call from deputy Lori Ann Parker of Davies County. And she starts discussing with me an event that happened in January, the first week of January. And I'm sitting there like trying to do a total recall. What are you talking about, lady? You gotta be kidding me. Finally, I explained to her, I'm not going to go into the details, but she ends, and I don't want to do the details for legal reasons, folks. I have to, I have to hold off for a little while longer. I've been a patient man for two years almost. Um, she charges me with sexual harassment. I have to get an attorney, get security on my house. I just went into $20,000 debt with just that. But that warrant was sent from someone in that courthouse. That warrant was sent to someone, his name was Billy Lowenstein, a tax attorney. And he took that warrant and placed it on the Cameron Community Forum social media, Facebook account that everyone in Cameron are tied into. It had my address, my phone number, my age, what have you, date of birth. But it also had my social security number and my driver's license number. In the past two years, I've had my bank account for the first time, having that bank account for nine years, I've had it compromised five times. And when you have automatic withdrawals, you've got to make the phone calls. It's a pain in the ass. It takes up a lot of time. But he puts it on Facebook. Travis Eldridge, who was the administrator at the time, he took it down. But someone from the courthouse sent that to him direct. And the only people that could do that would be the law enforcement officers, being the sheriff or the deputy, the prosecuting attorney or the clerk, the judge. What would the judge benefit from doing that? Nothing. Attorneys talk to attorneys. That's speculation. That's where David Rice of HickChristian.substack.com has written nine articles now covering all of this. Um, it could be the prosecuting attorney, but she'd be jeopardizing your license to practice law. So it has to be, possibly has to be either the janitor, the sheriff or the deputy. And then two days after that attorney, tax attorney in Cameron, William Lowenstein, he turned around and turned it over to, it's speculation, by the way, at this point, turned around and gave it to Jimmy Potts, the editor at the time that was very biased. And he wrote what was called a hit piece in the Cameron Citizens Observer newspaper. Now, in that year of 23, there were six other front page articles that were related to sexual offenses with guilty pleas. But there was no PSA, public service awareness, public service announcement of what these people looked like. But with my article, he puts my pretty face on the front page. I, I'm sure it's good to maybe keep away roaches and mice, but I didn't want my face on the front page with a hit piece. And you've got to see the hit piece, I believe it was written, it's either the 23rd or the 26th of May. So all of this happened within less than 10 days. I was growing, I, when I was growing up, I was taught a certain, a lot of different words of wisdom. And I'm sure you gentlemen heard this, maybe Brandon, you may be young enough, believe it or not, and I'm not meaning that insultingly, but sticks and stones will break your bones. Names will never hurt you. And you know, that's absolutely correct. Except for try pedophile. 15 minutes. Try being, try thinking about reading it. Someone saying, you're nothing but a pedophile. I- 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 it's, you just want to lose it. You want to lose it. You want to reach into that computer, grab that person, shake and break their neck off, but you can't do it. So this went on for several months. Eight months later, it finally made it into a deposition. At the deposition was clearly indicated that there were no victims. Both of the young girls were being used as pawns for a situation that occurred in that uh, first week of January. I can tell you, it was cold. I was wearing my coat. I walked into Subway. They couldn't see my headlights because of the tinted windows. They had the radio blaring. I didn't know what song they were playing until later. They had the radio blaring and they're dancing between themselves beyond a counter. They can't hear me. I can't hear them technically. And I just thought about all Lang Zein. I thought about the couple of young kids I seen just a couple of weeks before. One kid in particular at a convenience store. He was like, I don't want to be here at work. He's 16. I don't want to be here at work. And I'm like, well, what would you rather be doing? He goes, I'd rather be home playing video games. And I'm like, young man, son, your parents are teaching you responsibility. Hey, you're going to have some money for Christmas. It's a good thing. So anyway, I walk in, all these thoughts are going through my head, especially my friend Anita, who passed away three years before. And she was a heavyset woman. And she would sit at the bar when I walked in and she turned and say, hey, shake that moneymaker. You look good on a pole. Well, I myself have to tell you, I would reply back, not me, but you would. And I'd continue up to the bar. I had a friend of mine willing to testify, still would, willing to testify, believe it or not, that when I walked into that bar, any woman that I was associated with, they'd all yell it to me like they would Norm. Remember Norm from Cheers? Exact thing. So this is what I would, would, would hear from these women. And why did they do that? Because I was usually their designated driver, their bodyguard at other bars. And I could dance or at that time I could dance very, very, very well. So, you know, I was kind of the protector of the girls. I, if I went out with them, it was, I'm going out, I have a ladies night and I'm nothing but a man. But it was an ongoing joke. So that's what I said, walking in the door. The girls never even heard it. And I've got a loud boisterous voice. And so I went to the counter, ordered my food and technically left. Um, it came out in the deposition that, you know, the girls had done their own thing. They were listening to basically Eminem, Shake That. Shake That would be kind of like going to a movie in the 50s. They would put eight seconds, like just a blip of a second of popcorn. You'd see 15, 20 people get up and go buy popcorn, subliminal messaging. So when they were singing that, that play in that Eminem song, which is very, very X-rated, Shake That, I was like, shake, you know, shake that moneymaker. That, that's what kicked me in. But the deputy was using these kids as pawns because ultimately in that deposition, she says, finally, after being asked three times, who placed these charges on Vincent Cooper? Who is the victim? And she finally said, it was my opinion. That gets rid of her qualified immunity. She's using her badge and her gun to usurp her authority to falsely accuse me with malicious intent of prosecution as well, of a crime I never committed. That's where I finally found an attorney, been working on this. And it's been a long, long, long year and a half and then some. Don't know if it's going to make it into court. It should be, I believe, I hope. I just don't know when. But this is how bad the people in the community are. They're okay with destroying a person's reputation. Now getting back to Heath and Dan, God bless them. Dan tried and Heath tried. They both wanted to run for public office of the school board. They need a change because they're also lock and step with each other. Dan was not allowed to talk in, at a, a school board meeting when Jackie Peck shouted out to the audience about campaigning and voting and blah, 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 with her name as a candidate. She's doing this on public's time, uh, of the, of the school board's time, campaigning on stage. So when Dan asked her or asked the school board if he could do that, they said, no, sit down, you peasant. That's why we have to look at the Missouri Ethics Committee and say, what is wrong with you people? How is it that you don't see that this is quote, a complete conflict of interest? You're patronizing one party, but not giving equal status to the other. They should have allowed Dan Landy to at least speak for those two, three minutes, whatever. They should have. They didn't. And you know, when we had these porn books going along, by the way, uh, going along, we did reach out to Maisie Boyd, representative, Dean Van Schuit, representative, and Rusty Black, Senator, State Senator of Missouri. Dean Van Schuit, he's married to a teacher. His daughter is a teacher. He's a retired teacher from agriculture. He gave us an email that said, it's not our business. Let that marinate. It's not my business. I don't have to get involved with these books at the school. Rusty Black and Maisie Boyd both had, the sessions were closed. They could have come, but they didn't. No one wants to show up on behalf of trying to protect the children's education material. No one. And I'm calling them out. They are oath breakers, in my opinion. If I was governor. But getting back, let's go back again. I have to go back to Billy Lowenstein. That would be the attorney that doxxed me. I contacted the Missouri Bar. The Missouri Bar said Cecilia Young of the Missouri Bar, the Office of Disciplinary, Chief Disciplinary Counsel, the Missouri Bar. Cecilia Young replies back to me in a letter saying, he's done nothing wrong. Social security number, license number, driver's license, he's done nothing wrong? Are you kidding me? You gotta be kidding me. So every day for about two weeks, I called her up. And I asked her, can I have your address, your phone number, your social security number, your date of birth? And your, and your driver's license number? I'd like to put it on the internet. Thank you, ma'am. I did this every single morning for two to three weeks. Sometimes I doubled down and do it once in the afternoon. Yeah. Am I bold, brash, brazen and blatantly blunt? Oh, hell yes, I am. So finally I got a letter from them. Mr. Cooper, please stop calling us. We may consider that, we may consider a chargeable section here, like harassment. Okay, fine. I'm good with that. I go to the Missouri Attorney General's office to not only discuss the books, not only discuss everything that we've been dealing with, with the state representatives, all nine yards. I go there and say, um, you know, this is what the Missouri Bar did to this attorney. They basically said he did doxx me. And they said, we agreed, the Missouri Attorney General, the gentleman's name, uh, escaped me for a moment. I'm very sorry. Um, he Humphrey, Jake Humphrey was his name. He replies back to me, well, we agree with the Missouri Bar. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. So I go to Cameron P D, file an official police report. That's when Cameron P D turns around and says, yep, he's has a class C misdemeanor, doxxing. And Mr. Cooper, since you live in Davies County, we're going to turn the case over to your sheriff, Sheriff Larry, the crim- corrupt criminal oath-breaking sheriff. We're going to turn it over to him. Why do I call in that? He let it sit. There's a statute of limitations on a charge being pressed by a citizen on another citizen of one year. In this case, this particular, um, charge level, I guess the best way to put it. So he gets a pass. This is, this is a, this is the world that we're living in right now. This is, this is a, this is the world that we're living in right now, uh John, uh Brandon. It blows my mind. And now we have fentanyl that we have found in August of 24. Mr. Gilbert at the time was foster carrying a child. Found this child to have marijuana, as well as access to other drugs like fentanyl. I was given the boy's name, age, grade, his social media accounts, and I went to Chief Miller, who had just taken the position six months before. I went to him and said, this is my information. I'd like to file a report. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Out the door I go. February, Heath Gilbert goes in to follow up on that. In doing so, there's no case number for my report, nothing. So he actually has to file now a structured case report. A couple of months passed, which would take us up to about June of this year. Mr. Gilbert goes back down to the, to the, the Cameron Police Department to find out where they are with the fentanyl charge allegations of. Someone told Detective Smith, who is an investigating officer, to take that felony and turn it back over to the School Resource Officer. It's not the way it's supposed to go. Supposed to be moving forward through what's called a prosecutor attorney. Brandy McLean of Plattsburgh, Clinton County, did not want to quote, bring charges on or do any further investigation. And the detective closed the investigation down without even talking to myself or talking to Heath Gilbert. And during all this going on, there's still more to it. The MOU, the, the memorandum of understanding, which is basically having your own police force. Robinson, the superintendent, he actually has his own police force where he is quote, the chief of police without being post-certified. So he hires Palmer and another gentleman. Uh, I, I can't, I, I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on this one, but the bottom line is this. They're not qualified to investigate felony charges. So why is a Cameron PD turning it back over to a School Resource Officer? That's because they could keep that information between him and the superintendent, and the school board had no clue. In November of last year, 12 months ago, Heath Gilbert went in and exposed new information to the school board. There was a sexual assault on a female. And um, no mandated reporting. You need to look into this. They were like, that, that, there can't be a sexual assault. We would know about these things. No, it was another cover up by Robinson. He didn't do the mandated reporting. Palmer even went to the parent's house and said, nothing to see here with the kid. She's okay. Don't take her to the doctors. We'll handle this. I'm not making this stuff up. Where is it that the school administration has any quote, responsibility of any kind to investigate a sexual assault? It's disgusting. It's wrong. Absolutely wrong. Um, I need a breath now. What are you guys unpacking here? Anything?
I, there, there's so much here, right? It's not like, it's not like this is all about pornographic books in the library. There's so many layers to this thing and, and that, you know, we have two hours and it just seems like we could do four to six hours on everything and maybe still not have enough time, right? But I, folks, I'm just going to say this and I'll, I'll let Brandon speak because I, my brain is kind of fried right now. But some people, anybody that I know personally that may happen to watch this and sometimes they see my posts on Facebook or something like, I don't understand why John feels this way about the government or the schools or whatever. Let me, let me just exhibit A right here. Do you want to know why Brandon and I get on here week after week after week and trash? Every governance agency under the sun, basically. Right here is why. Why do we get on here and say, people, parents should really think about homeschooling their kids more. If you're not, you better, you damn, you damn well better make sure you know exactly what your school board is up to and who you're electing and putting in those positions. This is why we do this show a lot, all right? This is why we hammer on this so, so much. Topics like this because of what Mr. Cooper has been going through and what he's detailing for us tonight. And this is why you have to pay attention, basically in a nutshell, of what the hell your, your school is doing. And we've got other instances of this. I mean, Brandon brought up the article on the, you know, the, was it the open house at the one school and they just had the whole LGBTQ board of all the different, you know, all those sexual and everything else. So Brandy, you go ahead with your thoughts, but this is why we do this, folks, and this is why we keep hammer on it. Sometimes ad nauseam to where you're like, God, are we talking about this again? Well, we, we have to because it keeps happening.
Well, I think this story really highlights just even, even at the local level, how hard making like positive change can be and the sacrifice that people go through to expose the truth. And the, the different levels of harassment that you will, that you would never expect in small town America like that. You'd think that this, this story would have a very simple open and shut beginning, like, oh, they found pornographic books at the school library. They're gonna take the, you know, they're gonna keep the certain kids that, you know, the parents don't want them reading those books. They're gonna take it out. Booms, open and shut, but the no, it just, it keeps adding levels and different levels of different government entities, even like, even at the smallest of local levels, all just working together. And it almost seems like you're in the club or you're not in the club. And that if you're out of the club, then you get no say, then your opinions don't matter. And it, you just goes to show you that how, how inspirational it can be and why it's important to fight all of the fights at the local level. And then even the harder ones at the state and national level, because every, for every time you move up a rank from like the local level to the state level, you're adding 10 times the level of corruption. And then at the national level, 10 times the level of corruption. So I, I just think it's important to, to really hear, to like, like you said, to listen to these stories and make sure that these people have their voices heard because like what's happened to you and Dan and um Gil, I mean, it's just all been so, it's, it's just so crazy. It seems like every time that, I mean, for instance, with just like the very end of the last story, you were just, the last part of the story you were just talking about, like where you, because you saw the same kind of thing happen in, uh, it, it got a lot more attention, but a Virginia school district tried to bury one of their students was having a sexual assault scandal. And then it turned out that actually the parents had to go to the school board. And that's when Merrick Garland, who was at the time, the Attorney General, he was putting people on FBI watch lists for, like he was, he was calling parents who are just concerned about the same kind of things that the people in Cameron, Missouri were concerned with. They were labeling them as domestic terrorists and using federal resources to monitor these people and, and violate their rights. And so, you know, credit to, credit to all the people involved in this story who are still going to these school board meetings and still fighting. Because uh, another part of the story that I was reading is that um, the two guys, the, the Dan and the other guy who ran for the school board, that the local newspaper was against them, the uh, the City Chamber of Commerce was against them because it was either the former school board uh president or just someone on the board was the uh, head of the Chamber of Commerce. So it was businesses, it was media, it was just, there was all, all of the different local entities had, were attempting to stifle these guys who had real complaints about the school board. And so
I just want to add, I just, I think, I think we should change. And I, I have to credit some friends of mine for saying this, but I think we should change like entirely from this day forward. We will no longer say the Chamber of Commerce. We will now refer to them as the Chamber of Communism, because it's not just on this topic matter. Chamber of Commerce just suck in a lot of towns. They do a lot more harm than good. Uh, just this springs to mind. So I know I'm getting off subject matter for just a second. But I think from now on, in this show, we shall call them the Chamber of Communism, because generally the things that people think, that all the good things people think they do, uh, go look again, because you're going to find uh, when they, when they fight against legislation, uh, some of these Chamber of Commerce's and stuff about, you know, against uh, reforming personal, personal property tax, this, that, or the other. Chamber of Commerce doesn't like it when you try to reform it to where, you know, it helps the people out. So just be aware of that. And you guys can, Vincent, you can continue on, or Brandon, you can continue on with your thought. But I, I just think we should now refer them as Chamber of Communism on every show if we bring that god awful entity's name up.
In most towns, it's kind of one of those symbols. It's like being on the school board and it's like being in, on the city council. It's one of those like, I'm in the club now kind of things, like, oh, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm, I'm in the circle that gets to make the decisions and, and all that. But anyway, going back, because the part of the story that's just kind of, uh, the, the last part of the, the last few details of the story are, are kind of hard to grasp. So did the parents ever go back to that school board meeting and tell the school, like, how, how did it, how did it, the information surface that there was a sexual assault? Or what's the, how did that conclude?
How did the assault occlude, the sexual assault?
Well, yeah, because the, when we, when you left off there, all we'd known was that um, I can't, I, I gotta get, because it's killing me that I keep forgetting this guy's name. Um, the one guy who went back up to the school board and was basically telling them that there was a sexual assault. And uh, you said that somebody had went to the parent's house and told them not to go to the doctor's office. So how, is
Palmer.
Palmer.
So how Palmer, the School Resource Officer.
Went to the, went to the parent's house and told them not to, not to go to a doctor's office. So I did, when you were saying that the school board Right. So the school board denied this ever happened, but then they, this had to have come to light at some point, right? Like what is the school board's answer now that this information's out in the public?
Well, right now, we don't know what the parents are doing about it. I'm more concerned about her, the, the child, of course. Uh, the, the first question that comes to mind is, how is it that a seven-year-old boy knows how to do these things? Where did he learn it from? Or is he even being possibly abused sexually? That's again, my thought on that. But that was a whole thing. Uh, Heath, the, the lady did come back the next day and we had one anonymous, the spineless cowards are anonymous ones, I say. Um, he comes off saying, Officer Gilbert, Officer Gilbert, my, my son was violated seven years ago. Can you help me? Well, the lady actually got on there, the mother of the child had said, he's telling the truth. This happened to my daughter. Now, I don't know where it's at right now. I cannot speculate. I don't want to. It's not my business. Um, but the sad part about this is when you're looking at situations as such, or you're looking at like Heath wanting to get the police report, having been closed and that the Chief of Police Dan Miller, in this past June, was transferred to being the acting city manager. Um, and Tanya O'Boyle's husband is now the acting police chief. Someone had to tell that detective to turn it back over to the school. Then when they had that contract, which was to be signed by the city and by the uh, four entities, five entities of, of Sheriff's Department, four entities of Sheriff's Department and the City of Cameron, because there are four counties that are together, Caldwell, DeCob, Clinton and Davies, three of the law enforcement agencies approved the memorandum, which should have made the city say, I think we need to look at this again. Now, they do have a 327-page book for police policy now. Um, so that was a, an effort that was, that was good. Um, down. I, my dog cat just came in, sorry. And he wants to go back out again. But the thing was, Chief, I believe, because I talked to Chief Miller in August, he said, well, I didn't tell him to turn it back over. That must have been someone else. They want to just pass on the blame when you know in reality that they're the ones most likely that did this. He actually told me, I had, I had nothing to do with it, but he was in fact, the acting chief police officer, Chief Dan Miller, at the time that um, that Heath was uh, wanting that information about the fentanyl. And it went back to the school. So Heath actually had that information almost, well, definitely did, had the police report. He had the police report and he turned around in June, was turned around, it gets even more bizarre. In June, just as he's ready to address the school board, the following week, that Friday, the Communications Director and the um, Custodian of Records, who handles the Sunshine Law Requests, takes out a fraudulent falsehood, fake lies and allegations against Heath Gilbert and has 10 pages for which to work with. And she compiles all this stuff. Most likely, we know it's going to come out eventually with assistance, but it was all a lie because Heath Gilbert had a video of every single transaction, every single date that she noted. And she, by the way, was a new hire about a year ago. So she makes this false restraining order against him. He has to pick up an attorney. And his life is disheveled for quite some time. And finally, it comes out that she comes back into court and says, I want to drop the charges of this restraining order. Nothing to see here. And who pays for this? He paid for it. He is out money. She lied about him. These people are corrupt. So in June, as he was ready to tell the school board about the fentanyl situation with the police report, they ultimately find a way to ban him. A lifetime ban from being on school property, being at any kind of school engagement. And he's not allowed to go to quote, any away games where the Cameron School Football Team, baseball, soccer, hockey, whatever, plays at, he's not allowed to go to Hamilton to look at that game. Well, they finally also banned Dan in August of this year, finalized in September. He is now banned, but they're going to maybe review it in January. I had interviewed Robinson in July and Robinson, in a smug way, which we have this on video, said, the community loves me. Good luck getting rid of me. Yeah, I wouldn't hold your breath. He actually resigned on Constitution Day, never forget the date now, 17th of September. He resigns. Now, why does a superintendent resign? Is it the sexual assault? Is it the fentanyl? Is it the fact that these board books are in the school and he's taking them out of the school? Is it the fact that he's violating so many policies of modesty and he has so much power to do so? Uh, folks, how can you give him a raise? And they did, they gave him a raise with GPAs. By the way, my biggest interest in this, number one interest in this fight is the GPAs. Missouri has a 40% proficiency to get a high school diploma. When I went to school, I had to have at least a 75% proficiency grade to get a high school diploma. That's where they brag about being at 43% here in Cameron. Well, we're above the state average. And I'm like, what are you, out of your freaking minds? You guys have to be, what? Are you nuts? And when Robinson took over 15 years ago, 75% was the grade point average. And now it's 40%. And he gets raises periodically for his tenure for the past 15 years. How is it you give someone a raise when the grade point averages of the student are plummeting? It makes no sense. Help me make sense of this, please. I'm going to let my dog cat out again. He came in for food. Your thoughts on that, please?
Well, I, on the superintendent thing, it depends on the school district. I do know if you live in a district, um, and let's say they, they want to put a school, you know, they want to put a school bond on the ballot and the superintendent's a silver tongue devil and uh, can convince people to, you know, pass these And the superintendent's a silver tongue devil and, uh, can convince people to, you know, pass these school bonds. If they're, if they're really good at stuff like that, they'll get raises. It doesn't matter. But the GPAs and stuff don't matter. If they're good at getting money and maybe increased money into the school district, no, no matter what, what the end result for educationally the kids have, right? You know, that goal isn't, isn't thought of. If you can continue to keep kids coming in, get more kids in, get more school bonds passed, get more money for the district. Then they, the, the school itself is going to look at that as an overall win. And you're going to fail upwards. You are going to keep fleecing taxpayers. You're not doing the kids any good, but you're keeping the school from getting a black eye, whether it be, you know, be it, uh, covering up, uh, you know, um, fentanyl in the schools or sexual assaults. So in the newspapers and everything else, the school looks fantastic. And you're keeping the money flowing and you're keeping the kids coming to school every day. So they get paid per student. Then the, the, the school districts, a lot of these school districts are going to look upon that as favorable. And so, yeah, you're going to continue to get pay raises because hey, in the public eye, we look slick. We can, we can brag. Uh, the parents don't understand that 43% is not good. Maybe they don't get the actual facts, all the facts. They just get to say, we're above the state average without saying what the number is. The parents think, oh, the school's doing exceptionally well. My kids are getting passing grades. They're, 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 you know, they're not being held back, all these different things. So if you can pull the wool over the community's eyes and keep the school well-funded, everybody's like, great guy. Let's keep him. Give him a raise so he doesn't go somewhere else. And as a parent or as a community member, you have to dig a little deeper into this topic matter in your local area. Now I will say, right, I, I had the Camden Town School Board President on the show a year or two ago. And I point blank asked her why you had, these schools have to have a superintendent, an assistant superintendent and all the staffing and all this stuff. And she said, it's because all the rules put on the schools by Desi. It's too much for a limited number of people that you would generally used to have at the school. So they have to keep hiring more staff to check the boxes before education's even thought of, right? So there's a huge problem right there. They're having to check all the boxes because of what Republicans and Democrats, whoever's has the power to make the decisions to what Desi's going to do, Desi plops it in the laps of the schools and says, you better, you better get this in line or you won't get your money. And so they have to hire people and, and they have to keep hiring people and, you know, assistants and all this stuff. So, you know, it's a thing. The school is stressed, seemingly stressed about just being able to get the kids to pass the assessments at, at what the government deems as good, 40%, so they continue to get their funding. You have Desi, on the other hand, and, and the state government who's passing more rules and the federal government passing rules on what your schools have to do. So the stress is there to get that money in. So they don't look bad. Screw the education. And then because of what these NGOs do, also funding this pornographic material into the schools. I mean, I, to think about being a school board member, if you want to be going there and do the right thing, it has got to be like going to Washington DC and trying to do something good, right? Good luck getting anything actually good accomplished. But, and I, so I can't imagine what the stress is. But I would think, you would think, this isn't the case clearly here, but you would think that if these people get up and when they are trying to be elected to school board, they're telling parents, they're telling the parents in the community, they want to, they want to continue a good education. You want to do all these things. And it slips out that they're not. Now they're, again, they're playing a good job of, uh, do the old CYA. But there's enough information out there that seems that that's not happening. I, I think the community should get up in arms. I also think that when stories come out like this, I think parents from all across the state, so I think any parent in Missouri here or any citizen at all that sees this or hears this should maybe considering calling the Cameron School Board and just start blowing up their, uh, voicemail boxes, blowing up the office phones and saying, you know, hey, you know, we could, we would really appreciate if you turn it around or we'll just launch investigation after investigation and financially break your school. Maybe you should think about replacing the superintendent or this person. And maybe it's going to take a whole lot of public pressure. The problem is, and Brandon and I covering articles see this a lot, right? That people go on to take this stuff on and they'll have a few people. And that's it. And I think, and I'll let Brandon go on after this. I, I, I think one of the biggest examples of that, even though this has nothing to do with school per se, during COVID, you would see a business fight back against policies on if, you know, only operating at 25% or only being able to do takeout orders or whatever, right? And they would want to fight back. And all, and generally the other businesses were like, dude, you're going to mess it up for the rest of us. Instead of banding together and knowing, all of these people knowing that they're, they're in dire straits financially. Instead of hopping on board and saying, this is wrong and we all oppose this and you don't have enough people to arrest us. The majority stayed silent. And it's the same thing with these school boards. You have a few people who are willing to stand up and say, this is absolutely not tolerable. We cannot tolerate this. You're ruining the lives of children. You'll get a few like Vincent and, and a few other people that he's named. And everybody else is just like, eh, they, no one, people just don't want to rock the boat. And it's, it's sad for people to stand back, read a newspaper. You should know by now, you can't believe everything you read in print or see on the news. It's horrible. To not go, uh, when you see somebody being targeted like this, your response should be, hey, I bet this guy's right over the target because we see it, right? Cover it on this show. We'll see somebody who's fighting hard. Thomas Massey being one of them. Everybody's coming after him now. He's a Democrat socialist, right? Your red flag should go up and you go, I bet this guy's on to something. As many people as piling on, something's probably up. He was probably hitting the nail on the head and these people are upset about it. I wish we would see more of a response like that and not, oh dude, I wouldn't want to be in that guy's shoes. Sucks to be him and just hands off. And things don't get, things don't get fixed that way, folks. They just don't get fixed that way. If you're always hands off.
Well, I mean, even the people that are hands on in this situation, uh, I mean, I'm actually kind of shocked, hardly, can't hardly get over the fact that Heath and Dan are both banned from the school board meetings. That's unbelievable, considering that they were both candidates for that school board in, uh, in November of 2020 or whenever it was in 2024. So, I mean, that just seems on its face as like blatantly, I, I mean, in, in the world where everyone's going after their political opponents and that's such a, um, tab, like it's such a prevalent thing that people talk about in like politics in general nowadays, like prosecuting Trump or going after this guy or whatever, that you could suspend indefinitely two challengers to the school board from all of the meetings. I mean, it's unbelievable. And also with, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be discouragive in any way, but it, it is, it is, um, eye opening how you can have all of these different things happen in the same school board. You can have all of these different allegations. And then the guys who challenged these, these tyrants who run the school board, that they'll, the, that the community wouldn't rally behind them and just show them at least some more support. Because from what I read, they lost like 800 votes to 300 votes each candidate respectively. And so to have a community not rally around people, it is a little bit, I don't know, like I said, eye opening and just discouraging. And I, I wish more people would pay attention at the local level and, and fight against, you know, the, just even the levels of corruption that you see at the local level.
So, uh, not this past time, but the time before. So I think it would have been 2023. They went to pass a school bond. We, we, the, the, the city defeated it two times by a very narrow margin. But somebody wanted to approach the board and speak about it. Now, if you want to speak in front of the school board, you have to submit something. Tell them about what you want to talk about and then they'll, and then they'll, they'll set a date. So you can't just show up to a school board meeting in Owensville and bring up a topic. It has to be approved and they'll say yea or nay. So you can't just show up and bring up a topic. It has to be, you have to get permission and then they put it in the time for the school board meeting to allow you to speak. So even in Owensville, we don't have what he's got going on in Cameron. But they want to, they want to limit how many people speak, what they speak about and everything else. Now, you know, this is the thing, they are elected, but they don't get paid anything to be on a school board. It is an unpaid position. And, but again, it's, we really care about the kids. We really care about the community. Fine. Then let the community speak without having to speak to the king of the board and have permission from his or her majesty to bring up a topic at the next school board. Why do we have to, why do we have to have this whole agenda planned out? And it, to me, that reeks of, uh, well, you know, what if this person's going to speak ill of us? Maybe we just won't have time to bring him forward and let them speak. So they want to control the, the talking points at the board meetings and they don't want dissent at a meeting. And it's like, okay, then all of you that are, any people on a school board that are in favor of policies like this have shown themselves to be truly spineless. They cannot have a civil discourse with someone who disagrees with them. They would rather just shut them down, act like tyrants and say, you're not going to say this here. I've seen it at city council meetings, people being arrested because it wasn't allowed to bring up past topics anymore. That's in the past and being firemen carried out of a city council meeting because the guy dared to, you know, go against their policy. School board and then, you know, what Brandon brought up earlier, people, people being put on the FBI watch list because they dared speak up at school board meetings. And it, it's just to me, if you don't want people coming up to you to a meeting held for the public and bring up something that makes you uncomfortable, then you are a coward and you should resign effectively. If you can't, if you're a grown ass adult and you can't bear the thought of having a disagreement with somebody over a policy, you should resign. You should just pack your box, go to your desk, put all your crap in a box and leave, vacate the premises, never to return until your spinal cord, I mean, I, I don't know. Can they do stem cell work and make you grow a spine? Maybe that's what we need to work on next in science and medicine. But yeah, I think these people should just vacate. If, if you can't be grown up enough to say, we're going to disagree, but let's have the discussion anyway. You, to me, you would seem like a much more, uh, stand-up type of person, like there's people politically that I disagree with, but I can have a discussion with and we'll come to a different outcome, but we're civil the whole time. I have more respect for that person than people who maybe even are more liberty oriented, who just refuse to talk to people on the other side of the aisle. I, I have more respect for a person who disagrees with me on a political or some kind of social topic, but will still have a civilized discourse with me over people who just refuse to do it. And that doesn't matter if they're school board members or if they're a part of the Missouri Freedom Caucus or whoever they are. If you're going to be that spineless, you shouldn't be in politics. You shouldn't be on a school board. You shouldn't be in a lot of areas of life and a career where you deal with the public. And that's just my two cents on the topic.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's, there's even more to this story too, that I was, um, gonna ask about. It was, um, oh, the, when the school board was doing the, uh, I, I can't remember if it was when they were deciding like on the committee to ban, on the committee of what they were going to do about, um, all of the, um, graphic books in the schools, they were, the school board was violating the sunshine law because all of the voting is supposed to be on public record, but they were breaking into a subcommittee and then voting anonymously and weren't posting the results of the votes. And then when pressured, uh, to post the results of the vote, they, the names of the board members weren't attached to the vote. It was still an anonymous vote. They just posted the results. And so I didn't know if you had more to elaborate on the different sunshine law request violations of the, uh, of the school board.
Uh, on that in particular, uh, it has been identified. We understand that they, again, they wouldn't let us know who voted what way, uh, when it comes to even the elections of the candidates. Uh, Heath and Dan both asked for all the candidates to gather in a room. We offered at the American Legion, people that would, um, basically do like the press, a press release of sorts. Find out what their agenda is, find out what they want to do. What are their ideas of moving forward? How can we change these things? Well, not one school board candidate that's on the school board because they get reelected. Another one, a new one, I call him soy boy Ryan Murphy. Today he played president for the first time. And, and now I got banned tonight. My bans for one year with stipulations that, uh, it could be reviewed and extended. Um, in that, in that, in that live stream, Robinson actually said, yeah, we don't like his words, so we're banning him. That's a complete first, I mean, they just threw themselves under a bus. They don't even realize violation of my first amendment. So, um, with this, with the, the bans that Heath and Dan had, they were allowed to stop talking and show a video. My address was six pages long, eight minutes to be exact. And then I wanted to show my video. Now, this was the difference of how I wanted to initially approach it. And this was my initial approach to this. Please tell me if it's wrong. I play chess. So when I'm talking, I'm saying something, obviously. I wanted the clock to stop, show the video to view that point of what I'm discussing. And then when I started talking, start the timer again and allow me to show my video. And we would do it that way. They can't even play checkers. Tonight I was asked to speak 10 minutes only and video. They included my video, which is 18 minutes long into my 10 minutes to speak. And I told them this is not proper. I need my evidence to be exposed. And on top of that, I asked for the complaints that were written against me for my, for, for their reasoning of banning me. And they, and I paid $11.66, believe it or not, for six files that were redacted 100% because Ed Council, the law firm told them, turn it over to us. He can't look at it. So I couldn't technically do a discovery to, to, to validate or substantiate a, a defense against them. So, um, they, 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 we are going to redo this. Uh, Heath and I are going to turn around and redo this hopefully tomorrow. And we're going to make it where it should have been, the way I said it should be. Why? Because that's the way it should have been. They needed to see all my video evidence that I wasn't yelling and screaming. I've got a big mouth. So what? I was never rude, crude or disrespectful. I did call Gina Baitam a liar and a thief to her face. That's because she is. It, it, the, the ponderance of evidence that I have, that Heath has is enough to choke an elephant. And I'm not making, I'm not making a joke of it. You guys were talking to this more specifically. And Brandon, I like your brain. You think about money a lot, I think. Um, the people that sit on the board, you look at Stacy Early, she's the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Her husband is the top dog in, in the, in this area for RE/MAX. And he is also the biggest spender or one of the biggest spenders of advertising for the newspaper. Mark McLaughlin was told by the publisher, back off any school stories because the advert- because the advertisers are gonna pull their, 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 uh, money. And then there was another newspaper, Jamie Honeycutt of Trenton, Missouri has the, I believe it's called the, the try, the, the, the Trenton Republican. Anyway, I told him about how I had been arrested in June, but within less than a month of everything that I was going through at that moment. It was a story for him to look into and I told him about the books. A year later, he did get involved, but when he had to close his doors down recently, I'll say the past six, eight months, he had to close the doors to his Clinton County Leader Newspaper that he started because he wasn't getting the advertising money. And it, money is a big play of this. And the Cameron community does understand, they're not being told all the truths through the, of what they should have for news in the Cameron Citizens Observer about the school, what the school's doing, how inappropriate all of this is. These people are causing the county more money than they could ever imagine. Because when, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when these lawsuits are filed, they're gonna have to pay out big money to Ed Council. They're the only ones that make money. They're incompetent to handle constitutional law. They're gonna lose to another team possibly of, of, uh, student lawyers, uh, out of Washington University. Who knows? But the bottom line is it's the taxpayers that are getting royally screwed. And so when you've got, that's just Stacy Early with the Chamber of Commerce, she's on the school board. You've got, um, you've got Andy Lockridge, she is an attorney of business contracts. Her husband has an insurance company here in Gallatin. Again, they all work together. They need to have their businesses insured, blah, 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 blah. You've got Ann Clark, who used to be, uh, Ann Godwin. And, you know, because she came from a big name of, uh, her Godwin family. Uh, she is just, I don't know how to say, I call her the bulldog. Um, she is the type of woman that wants to live off the royalties of the past. Uh, there's a ball game, uh, field out here named after, I believe it's her grandfather or father. It's all old money. It's all big money and it's people that are keeping it to themselves. And they're not helping the Cameron, Cameron community, uh, uh, at all. And one thing that really got me was when I talked to Rick Scarborough, we got together, found some books. I went out to Minister's Alliance Group and spoke with, I believe it's, uh, Morgan Saunders, uh, out of Chillicothe, don't know what church he's in. And I asked the Minister's Alliance Group to come together, even my minister, to come together to say, hey, these books have to be removed. Yeah, we've gotta do something about these books. Spiritually, we have to do something about these books. Do you know not one of them came to the table except for the Passion Church of Lonnie Harding and his wife, Colleen? They are the only two that have come full blast into this. Now I've got a minister, uh, Robert Nelson here where I live on Lake Viking. I've got a minister, uh, there's a, one or two other ministers that did get kind of involved, but they didn't. The minister I was seeing for two and a half years, head of his security at that time, number one guy in case something were to happen with a gun intrusion. He wouldn't come in. And why wouldn't he come in? Because he has two daughters that are teachers and one of them just got an award this past May or March of last, of this year. And, and he didn't address the school board to even say, you know, you guys really ought to rethink some of these books. Because he wants to make sure his daughter's lives aren't disrupted by people like, quote, those of us that are concerned about. And when a Minister's Alliance Group, 19 churches will not come together to say that pornography does not belong in the hands of minors. That's a millstone waiting to go around their necks. I'm not judging them, but I am. I would not go, and I did, I stopped going to the church I was going to. I, Tim Harold and the Assembly of God, I walked away from. And when I did see him a couple of months later and I had, you know, he said, give me a hug. I gave him a hug, but I had to get home and just wash myself. I felt so filthy because he wouldn't come to the aid of the children. That's what this is all about. It's not about Vincent Cooper, Heath Gilbert, Dan Landy. It's not about anybody. It's about our children and our children's education. And when they finally get it through their skulls, we're not going away. We will continue doing what we're doing. We're not gonna give up. Well, I've got so many sunshine law requests and in fact, this last sunshine law request I did, they didn't do their job. They couldn't read a timestamp. I wanted a specific timestamp. They gave me a timestamp charging me $33.23. They gave me a timestamp that was 10, 15 minutes before what I asked. And then they charged me a second time for, and that was a minute and a half of, of video. Then they say, well, let's get the timestamp you want. Okay. But we're gonna charge you $13.95 more for their incompetency. Again, this is supposed to be the communications director. This is supposed to be the custodian of records. That's who she is, Gina Bane. And then you've got Angela Ornsby, who's, uh, the assistant superintendent, I believe. And she is supposed to take care of all complaints and so on and so forth. She's in 23 emails and nothing coming back to me saying, yo, Mr. Cooper, you got a point. You didn't get the timestamp you wanted. It's free of charge. Come get it. Oh, and I also waited five days to get that video that they had done, the, the first video. I had to wait five to six more business days to get that video and they had it done the very next day. I could have picked it up the next day. They could have called me up and said, come get your video, Mr. Cooper. But they didn't. These are the games that these people are playing. They change the rules incessantly all around. Dan Landy, um, I can't say enough about Dan as well. Uh, Catholic, devoted, a wonderful father, um, just an incredible man. And if anyone has answers and solutions at his fingertips, he does. And he would be willing to listen and sit down and do precisely that. Let's make changes as we need. You've got, uh, Scotty Grenier who sits on a school where he, he's not gonna run this year, I don't believe. Hope he doesn't because he's about his clue, he's clueless. I could get more information from a frisbee than I can get from this dude. And that's pretty sad. Uh, Jackie Peck, I call her Peckypoo. Uh, Peck, uh, Peckypoo. I, she is, well, she, she's this elderly lady that, you know, it kind of blends in. Well, that's not what you need. You need people that are willing to listen, fight and help us make some changes that are beneficial to the community, beneficial to the tax dollars. Um, the other person I wanted to talk about as far as on the board and the last person would be Pam Ice. Pam Ice is, well, I just call her Chipmunk Pam. She looks like a, one of the chipmunks. And at the parade where we were not allowed to attend the parade, public parade, she drove by smiling at us and laughing and, and, and when we went into the school board the following week or two later, it was stone cold, I hate you guys. They hate us for doing what we're doing. And we have been targeted financially, legally, you name it, hit from every side possible. And you know what? We're not affected. We're laughing at them because they are idiots. They, they are subversion. They basically are part of what's called subversion. And let me give you that, what I know of it. It's the simple purpose and intent of a constitution to remove all avenues of possible subversion. These people are literally violating our constitution. They're purposely making roadblocks and creating roadblocks with no substance. Heath Gilbert banned for life? You would think that he probably, I don't know, punched someone in the nose. Dan Landy banned for six months. What did he do? You know, smack someone, you know, upside the head? I mean, seriously, me? It was three, three, three numbers, two words and one article. How do you like that? Article of English, meaning that I voted along with them. And all I said was I, third, fourth and fifth it. So the two words are it and I, the article of English is and and three numbers. And I get banned for a year and they may continue it for another 10 years. These people are just way out of their, they're out of their minds. And I think it should, and we do all believe this too amongst ourselves, they should take civics lessons. They should take civic lessons. And if we don't hold them accountable, there are rules of the constitution for punishment. I won't discuss it because they're quite harsh. Do I agree with those rules? Oh, hell yes. And we're trying to just change our community. But you know what? We should have people, quote, along Pennsylvania Avenue that are hanging for the treason and their traitorship of the United States on the mass population, just alone with bringing in the invading alien immigrant illegals. They don't belong here and they aren't, they're not citizens. There is no due process. We are really in a bad spot in the nation and we are not the only school going through this. Many schools are at different levels. Uh, we're working with a group of people, um, out of Lawrence, Kansas and Gardner, Kansas. Uh, I'm gonna give a little shout out to, uh, Lawrence Accountability as well as to, on YouTube, as well as, um, a shout out to dreaded rabble rouser, that's capital D, capital R, dreaded rabble rouser, both on YouTube. Uh, we, we need to, we need to bring people together. And if it means different states to look at laws, we need to come together and make these changes in our community. And we're doing it and wanting to do it first and foremost, again, this educational system. The superintendent, if you, see, you can homeschool, you could private school, you could charter school or you could public school. The superintendent can allow a, a homeschool student can do one or two things by Mo Desi policy offered. If you're homeschooling, the superintendent can make the ultimate decision to say, your son, your daughter comes to our school for six hours. And yes, they're allowed to be in extracurricular activities. But if he were to say, your son and daughter can come to school for two hours a day, that's a break of money. That's four hours. He's not getting paid. And he lied to me about the amount of money that the students are costing, uh, the cost of the public school education per student here. He lied to me right to my face. So you've got parents that want their children to be inter, socially interactive. And he says, nope, unless they go by six hours of homeschooling a day, five days a week, six hours in our school, the rest is homeschool. That, that defeats the purpose and these parents should have tax rebates given to them. The, the state of Missouri has more than enough money to turn around and say, you know what? We could give you a tax rebate for your child instead of it costing, say, $12,000 to have your kid in school for one full year. And I'm just using a hypothetical number, a rounded number. We could give the homeschool parents $8,000, saving the state 4,000 of public school DEI crap. And we could turn around and let the parents have and give their kids good educations that they rightfully deserve. I never realized how important it was to have, and I did, I cursed my hands all 50 years as a construction person. Why wasn't I able to do anything more? I don't know. But if I, and I did about one time, want to run for governor with a constitution party in 24. I'm gonna try in 28, maybe. I may, if I can. First thing, we need more law enforcement in our communities to keep people civil. They just don't understand how to be respectfully moral with and to each other. Other words, the assaults, the vandalism, all that stuff. Number two, if you're an oath breaker, I love the phrase, you're fired. Perfect. Get rid of them. And we've got right now on the school board, every single one of them should be fired. Every one of them. We need to clean house. What are we gonna do if, if the community were to get together and say, guess what, guys? We're done with you. We're gonna put in other people. Well, there's, it's gonna be a struggle, but it can be done and it can be done. I live in an HOA. I've had my dealings with these bosno's of, uh, the, the HOA. And you know, these guys don't realize if the community got together at just 5% or 7%, we can actually get rid of the HOA altogether. And we don't have to go under these stupid covenants and governorship, governance of the HOA. But the people won't come together. The, the priests, the, 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 the preachers, the, the pastors, they won't come together to help save the children. The, 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 the school board won't come together to look and consider what options they have for other answers and solutions. And we have presented so many possibilities that are feasible. And the third thing that I would say, if I was again, governor, third thing, gross tax receipts. I worked with Colin Saurus out of, uh, out of, uh, he's about, he's way Kirkwood, Kirk, Kirksville area. I mean, this guy here, we could, we could easily have no more personal property tax going on the basis of at one time, 3%, now would have to be a broad based 5%. And you pay your 5% one time only, including if you bought your house. That means you can literally save money and you don't have to pay property tax every flipping year. We are not watching where our pennies are going, where our dollars are spent. And when you've got spouses that are on other boards, like you're saying, the Chamber of Communists, when you've got spouses that have that much power and the community is listening basically because they only hear the dribble and they don't want to get involved in it. And we've exposed so much light on so many different areas. And the people just don't get involved. The voter turnout for population, believe it or not, think about this. Voter turnout, population 12,000, let's say 10,000. And let's say out of 10,000, only 7,000 can vote. When you combine the two candidates that were voted for, the total amount of people that voted were maybe 2,500 to 3,000 people out of 7,000 possible voters. That fault belongs on those voters and it belongs on those people that are not involved. I used to think it was bad, bad teacher all the way. It's not. It's not only that, it's the parents and the constituents of the community that won't get involved. What is two hours a month? What? In fact, at one time, the city council meeting ran every other week on Monday. And the school board ran on a Monday night as well. And they would always be together. And I addressed the mayor, a couple of other people addressed the mayor and other people on the city council. And I guess city council got together with the school and said, guess what? You're gonna change it to Tuesday. Because if I have a problem with the city council, my business license of lawn service, I can't go to that meeting and go to the meeting on the same night, being conducted at the same time for my interest of my child's education. I have to weigh it out. And if I'm divorced, I don't know if my wife's gonna be able to do it because she's gonna be, quote, taking care of the kids or I'm gonna be taking care of the kids. But what is two hours out of the month to get proactive in your child's education? When you will take four to five hours on a Friday or Saturday night and go to a wrestling match, a football game, a baseball game, so on and so forth, a play. You'll take that five hours three times a month, two times a month, sometimes every single week. So where are your priorities, society? I'm done for the moment. Sorry.
No, I, I mean, a lot of what you're saying is resonating. And especially when you were talking about the school choice and the vouchers and everything. I, uh, I think it's a good kind of, um, analogy. I, uh, I think it's a good kind of, um, analogy for how, when you have the government running something without any competition, this is also part of the problem you see. Like it's important to fight the fights that you're fighting, but it's also important to fight for like the alternatives. Like if your school board's not going to change, then we need to fight for these voucher programs. And we need to, you know, take away the government's monopoly on child education. And you need to have parents like me and other parents who don't want to send their kids to these kinds of institutions where they're indoctrinating our kids. It's good to have options and the government, every time they run something, it, they just is run worse than what a private sector business would do. And I, you know, you see it with like the socialist in New York who wants to do, um, basically retry government ran grocery stores that were so incredibly successful in Illinois. And all of these different policies, it's like, that's the government being in control of these entities is going to make them so much worse. And, uh, it, it, yeah, like you said, it's just important to go back to being constitutional and, and trying to, and also are we, me and John have talked about this a bunch. I'm big on this. I think the American people have too much entertainment in their face and they have this need to be distracted where they aren't paying attention to things like the school board anymore. And all of this stuff just kind of gets swept under the rug and people go, oh, well, you know, I can't miss my chiefs. I can't miss this, you know, for whatever it is. And, uh, ends up failing the kids, you know, it, it has an effect on society all the way around.
Yeah, it is, uh, again, this is one of those cases that really. I mean, we, we, we've seen the viral video of the woman that goes to a school board meeting where, you know, males are, because they identify as female are undressing, using the girl's locker room. And she's got on like workout clothes underneath her clothes and she just starts disrobing in front of the school board. They're like, are you uncomfortable? Does this make you uncomfortable? Why are you so uncomfortable? I'm just changing into my workout wear. Why are you freaking out right now? So we, and I, I was just trying to find the viral video of the gentleman addressing a school board. It's an older video. But he's basically, uh, talking about a Supreme Court opinion on free speech at school, at meetings that you can say things that are abrasive and things like that, that is absolutely allowed. You can't, and he's, I mean, he's basically calling communist names. I wish I could find that video. I, I found it. I closed the page. I went to look for it again and it disappeared. I, I love YouTube's search, uh, abilities. You can't get the same video twice, looking up the same exact, using the same exact language you did the first time. But anyway, I, um, it, this is one of those astounding cases of, um, a school board, it, I, 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 cause I forgot what I was going to say. I want to bring up something that Brandon talked about. This state has proposed legislation on, uh, what they call like, uh, some kind of school vouchers or educational freedom or whatever. The problem is every single time they bring these bills up, there's something in there about homeschooling. And so the homeschoolers are like, no, 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 don't pass this bill because it, the language is vague enough to, depending on which idiot in a black robe looks at it, says, oh yeah, this absolutely applies this way to homeschoolers. And it could be, uh, one of them was like something about firearms in a, you know, in a school. And it, the way it was written could have been, someone could have saw that and said, oh, that, if you're homeschooling, you can't have guns in the home. I mean, they, it could have been linked in that way with the right people in the court and the, and the wrong idiot or the right idiot in the, in the black robe overhearing the case. He could genuinely opine that yes, that's what it means. If you're homeschool, your kids, you can't have guns there. Um, so yeah, every time they bring up these school choice bills, there's always something with homeschooling tucked in. And it's not for the positive side of homeschooling. It would be a negative. And so it's like, we've got to get these moron Republicans who love to sit there and just tell us how they want to fix education and make it easier for parents to go to whatever district they want to send their kids to. But they always have to sneak in language that shady as hell, seemingly is a negative to homeschooling or something to that effect. And it's these dirty little tricks they play. So we can't eat, that's the problem. We can't even get these so-called conservatives that we have in Jeff City can't bandwidth enough brain power together or freedom together to say, okay, we're going to work on this and we're going to leave homeschooling alone. Nope, someone, some Republican somewhere has to shove something in with homeschooling. It's like, um, what are you doing? This is not about home, those people already have their freedom. They're educating their child in the way they want, outside of the public indoctrination centers. They're doing exactly what they want. Their kids are being educated, probably more than likely better than the school would. So they don't need your help. They don't need, they don't, they don't need your help. The only, the only homeschooling type thing that I've seen that I didn't really necessarily have a problem with is that kids who homeschool could participate in sports programs at the, you know, the nearest public school. So if they wanted to try out for baseball, basketball, football, whatever they could, and they could be included in the school sports. But, and I was like, okay, that's fine, whatever, you know, it doesn't, there's nothing unconstitutional about that. But it's all the other stupid, uh, school choice bills and stuff that they want to push through that end up. If you read, you, you read down a few pages, you're like, what are you doing? Why, why, why are you doing this? You know, of, of course they can't, they just can't not, uh, violate Article three, section 23 or section 21 of the state constitution either. They, uh, and just to let you know, Brandon, I'll let you finish up, or we got four minutes left. So you guys round her out.
Well, uh, I, I always, now that we know this information, I always like to point out that it was Mike Parson, the Republican governor, who was awarded the medal from DESI, uh, given some prestigious award for increasing their budget $700 million while he, during his tenure in office. And I, it like, it, the Republicans and Democrats, they're not, uh, they're definitely not on the private school, homeschool side of trying to make the education system better. And, uh, it's the, the Republican legislature in general, as we've talked about several times on the show, they're just terrible at writing bills. They're terrible at following Article three, section 21 and 23 of the state constitution. Oh, and a lot of others for that matter. Uh, and so, yeah, it, when it comes to like things like protecting kids in schools, you can't trust the government. As Ronald Reagan always said, or said the one time, uh, it, it, the worst thing, the last thing you want to hear is I'm from the government and I'm here to help.
All right. So Vincent. Yeah, we got about two minutes left, so give us a very short, uh, sound off for this episode.
May I say something to you, both of you? I want to thank you both for allowing me to come on here. Uh, I would like to also extend, uh, both Heath Gilbert and Dan Landy to you. If you would like to hear what they have to say, how they feel about this stuff. Um, I think they'd be wonderful people for you to speak with. To say the least, I have the utmost respect for both of those gentlemen. But I thank you for allowing me to come on. I thank Tom Martz, big shout out to Tom. Uh, I've, I've listened to him on your program. Now that man, he's a trip and a half, but you guys have, uh, you guys have great interaction with that gentleman. Um, but no, I love Tom, I love Tom very much. Um, but I want to thank you both, uh, want us to let you know that for what it's worth. Um, I, I, I would like to think of you tonight in my prayers because I, I do believe that we need the prayers or the higher power to help us get through this. And I don't want to get religious in any way or theological. But I thank both of you and I will keep you guys in my prayers. Thank you very, very much for allowing me to come on. And as I said, um, we have a long road to go. So anytime you need something filled, I'm sure you can reach out to those two guys and fill in some wonderful hours, I'm sure.
So just to end, uh, Vincent, if you will, you can either send them my number and ask them to get in contact with me. And then maybe we can get them on the show here in the, in the next few weeks and they can talk to us from their perspective as well. Uh, that would be outstanding. All right, folks, that's going to do it for this week's edition of the Missouri Liberty Report. Thanks so much for joining us once again. And, uh, don't forget next week, we'll have the gentleman on from, uh, from St. Peters, who apparently is violating, of all things, the flowers to grass ratio. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, you can't make this stuff up. Uh, he's going to have a lot of good information. I don't know how long he's going to stay on with us, but I wanted him to come on and tell his side of a story. So with that being said, again, we'll see you right back here next Tuesday night at 6:30 PM for another edition of the Missouri Liberty Report.